Hey! What's going on in the big old town of LaSalle today, people? You know, I'm gonna bring you the latest and greatest like I always do. Since I'm the man with the 15 minutes of fame that I don't want to let loose. And we'll get into that in a little bit. We got a lot to talk about. City meeting last night, I'll wait for a few of you guys to jump on here. And hopefully get this show on the road. Very good meeting. Unfucking real, to be honest with you. Um, I've never been so embarrassed in my life, but you know, that's just... My opinion on it. Give me one second. Sorry, had to mess with the internet, make sure I'm up and running here. So anyway, what's going on in the big old town of LaSalle today, people? I gotta bring you the latest and greatest like I always do. The city meeting was fucking lit last night, let me tell you. You guys, you can't pay for this shit. This entertainment is superb. And don't worry, your man got it all on video. That's right, I'll bring it to you live in color later. And you can see the antics this city fucking plays on its residents. And how the mayor stone walls people. But before I get into all of that bullshit, I'd like to get into the good parts of the meeting. Um, since there's so many bad parts to the meeting, we've gotta talk about something good, so... I'm gonna thank Jordan Crane. And everybody in this fourth ward that lives by me and had to deal with third base being tore down. Thank that man for not letting that contractor tear down another damn building in this town. Um, he voiced his concerns and I'm proud of that, man. I give you an ad a boy. Uh, Jordan, thank you very much. You know that was wrong. I filed a complaint. My daughter filed a complaint. The guy kept tearing down the building? No dust control, no barricades? Tearing up the road? Shitting the road? No fucking care for anything. And the mayor let it happen, because the mayor is the one who... That's right. Told the homeowner, not only told the homeowner they needed to tear the building down, but requested this cheap son of a bitch come and do it. Um, too bad he couldn't put a little water on it, wouldn't have been such an issue, but you just fucked yourself. Thank God. Um, so thank you, Jordan. I'd like to thank Jepson too, he's working his ass off on trying to get our air mine in a row. Hopefully that's gonna be going up in the next couple of weeks, is what he's saying. I'm sure somebody's talking about it on the news, but you know, the news only wants to write what the news wants to write. And Casp seems to be the... If I'm saying his name right. The county board member who dumped some boxes off at the fucking leaf drop off. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But, let's talk about... Nixon six. Hot topic all the time. You know, the man, all the man wanted was a damn extension for a little bit of music to play a little bit longer than normal hours. And you can go into the... Go in and ask for that, it's... Everybody does it. The mayor has to spring up, "Well, you know, Chief Majewski, how's things been going?" And then, you know, this is all planned before the meeting, just to let you know. And I don't know why in the hell they gotta be picking on this kid like this, but Jesus Christ, let him run out of business. He says to him, "Well, you know, you didn't pay that or show up in court for that ticket you got." Now, we're probably talking about a city ordinance violation, it's probably a noise ordinance violation. They mailed the damn thing to the wrong place. They're trying to discredit the dude. What they're doing, I'll let you know what they're doing to you, Nick. They're building a case against you, because every time you do that, you're in that little book, just like Casp for dumping that leaves off. He's in the book forever. It doesn't get erased. Uh, city ordinances, you can type my name up, LaSalle County, and you'll see city ordinances that I've had fucking 20 years ago. Um, whatever. It is what it is, but... What are we doing, people? What are we doing? This is where, this is where our attention goes, you know? Trying, try, instead of working with Nixon six? And, and, and give and take a little bit, man, that's what life's about. Fuck, they're just trying to hang the man, any way they can. So, they did approve his minutes, but they had to throw that in, which is bullshit. Oh, and remember the last meeting, that was the big thing, because he didn't show up. Now, today's meeting was all about Casper. Uh, Casp, I'm sorry. I do need to talk about... The newspaper, the media, that are all at these meetings, and all know when we're having a public hearing. Did anybody in LaSalle know we were having a public hearing on a fucking park grant, again? For, let me get it straight, 600K. And the city's gotta cough up 300K of that. Don't forget, now this is called an OSLAND grant, O-S-L-A-N-D. The other one's an NDR grant that we talked about, $250,000 if they get it. Now, this is a public hearing. I don't know if anybody knows anything about a public hearings, but it's different than a city meeting. It's supposed to be printed in the paper. People are supposed to be notified. We've brought this up before, because nobody's being notified about these public meetings, and there's a reason for it. I know the reason. Grove knows the reason, but will he tell you? Um... He don't want people there. So they put a little notice in the paper, it's about yay big. Now, you think the News Tribune? Shaw Media? Any of them guys would be like, "Hey, just to let everybody know in LaSalle that, you know, they're going up for an OSLAND grant and there's a public hearing at such and such a time, blah, 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 blah." People don't read the fucking newspaper, especially when it's in that little print, they only go online. So if the newspaper don't write it in the article of after your meeting, is what they're supposed to be giving you news on, then they're failing us, people. And there's a reason why they're doing it. They don't want you there. They had a public fucking hearing, and I was so confused that it was a public hearing, because I go to every meeting, right? I didn't hear them saying anything about no public hearing coming up. So, when I get there, it says public hearing up at the top. They go through the mumble jumbo, you know? Grove's all fucking rattled, his cage is rattled, I don't know, whatever. They go through it, there's supposed to be public comments after. He skipped right over that shit. So quick, didn't even bring it up this time. I had to wait until after the meeting was over, so I could bring up my comments about the damn park and the OSLAND grant. That was a public hearing, that nobody knew about in LaSalle. Moving on. They're gonna do what they want with that money out there. That Tiff district, I'm gonna tell you, it goes from that goddamn park all the way up damn near to J.C. Whitney. The old J.C. Whitney, or the asphalt plant. Whatever fucking trips or triggers. It's all Tiff district, people. The water park was going out there, remember? The thing that was gonna bring the town a lot of money? And something happened? We'll never know, will we? Anyway, moving on, moving on. Money, 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 money. So, they're gonna demolish the building and thank God, Jordan. We're gonna give Gillan a try. At least they say they put water on it. Um, ba-da-la-la-la. City curb and gutter, gonna bring that up. Now, y'all know, they all watch my videos, thank you Boo, I know you're watching, and I know Baccador, I know you love my videos, because, oh, you just love it. It burns your ass, doesn't it? Burns his ass, and we'll get into him in a little bit, because he had a lot to say to Jamie last night. Um, curb and gutter, everybody, or storm drains, everybody knows that they've been having these fucking barricades around storm drains all over town. Well, Boo says, "Wow, it's been real nice that people been calling in saying, you know, that the barricades are being moved and it's the concrete's so good and so nice." And I'm like, "Where the hell's this happening at?" Because I just fucking drove here. And I'm telling you, whatever. He claims people called in. Now, I'm gonna tell you something, people, that ain't even half a fucking ward down there. That he's claiming people called in on. They ain't even started on our ward yet. That's funny. They watch my videos, and then they gotta try to make theirself look good and, you know, say whatever they need to say, blah, 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 blah. You know, bring it up, just like the street sweeper when I complain about it, then all of a sudden it's mysteriously driving down the road, even though it may not be cleaning a goddamn thing, it's driving down the road. No maintenance records, no nothing. Shitty. Um, so, I don't know what Boo's talking about, but anybody in town, y'all live here? I suggest y'all call him and say, "What barricades are you talking about that's been moved?" Because I ain't seeing them. They got them in front of a cop's house. I don't know. You tell me, been that way for a long time. Okay. We had a lot of excitement last night. And I got video of it. And I'll let the video do the talking. Because video is video. And this is the whole reason why they don't record their fucking meetings at the city of LaSalle. And I will entertain you to the fucking high heavens with it. Trust me, I will. There's so much goodness in this video. We had a long meeting last night, a lot longer than we expected, but, oh, well. We talked about some blackmail. You'll hear it in the video. We talked about some shady practices with the city. We talked about a lot of shit. Um, guy was there. Mayor Grove, stone walled his ass like he does everybody else, and then questioned that man's integrity. And shit, you thought I was a lit fucking fuse? Whoa, boy, that motherfucking room was lit. Lit! And I got it all on video. Mayor Grove acting like a fucking ass and getting put right back in his place. Jamie Hicks would have acted like that, I probably would have ended up in jail, but, you know... You know? Oh, well. Mayor, Alderman, Alderman Baccador is a shame to this city. I'm gonna get real for a fucking minute. And I say it no joke. This man loves to juice people up. And you're gonna see it in action, because I don't think most of you understand and realize just how much of an asshole he really is. And what does he do for you? Uh, has he helped anybody in this city, any affected Harris Chemical people? Like Bob Thompson has? No? Have you told me to just shut up and give up the fight because you're going up against Harris and you know you ain't gonna win? Yeah, you told me that. Told me a lot of things, but you know what? He's bashing me. He wants to bash me, he claims I'm out for my 15 minutes of fucking fame, and I'll tell you what, I got a lot more important shit to do than what I'm doing right here. Lot more important shit. I got a lot of time invested in this, and he wants to question my goddamn integrity. And what I'm doing with my FOIA's, people. And everybody knows what I do at my FOIA's. I share. I read, I share. I've given the city so many FOIA's and so much information of lies being told about the Harris Chemical fire, what's being done with our fucking city shit, permits that nobody knows about, outdated shit, and nobody being held accountable. But we got more important things to fucking worry about, right? He wants to know why I need 60 FOIA's. He says, "I gotta stay," he came in, there was a stack of papers on Brent Bader's desk, and he asked what was going on, and Brent Bader said, "Fuck, he's..." You know, "He put in 60 fucking requests?" You know, "And this is next one." I go in and I tell why I wanted that request. All I asked for was Andy Bastard's emails. And some fucking permits, and some violations that were written. I did get explained, I will say, after the meeting, by Mr. Duncan and Mr. Bader, which I appreciate your time in talking to me about them FOIA's. I understand a little bit more. That maybe in my head, I'm asking for exactly what I want, but in your head, it's a little bit broader than that. And that's something that's called a communication problem. And that's something I think we can work on. That's the good news. So, thank you, Brent, and thank you, thank you, John Duncan. And Mr. Duncan, I've never once accused you of any wrongdoing. I know a man in that, in them chambers, that's done a lot of wrong in this fucking town to get what he's got. And to get where he's at. But back to Baccador. He had to open his big mouth and question my civil rights as a fucking US citizen. Freedom of Information Act was put in place for us, people. And it's not my fault that our city guy is overwhelmed with not only my FOIA's, but the other FOIA's that are coming in too, because people want fucking questions answered. It's not that hard. And when I find something out, like I do in every FOIA, I bring it to you, people. And the city gets it too, because they're all watching me, and Harris gets it. And then Harris calls the city, and then they say it's bullshit, the EPA, the IEP, the Health Department, blah, 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 bullshit. Ignorance is blind, people. Ignorance is blind. And that man, Mr. Baccador, Alderman Baccador, is ignorant. He always has been, and always will be. But, does he know anything about anything? No. He's sat in that seat for how many years, and he's still questioning, "What do we gotta do?" Do you pay attention? Nope. I brought the Sierra Club to the city on a fucking platter, and you might as well pissed all over him. You took our straw vote and buried the son of a bitch. But now you guys wanna use the straw vote for everything that you wanna try to get past. Like Mayor Grove wants to get a $60,000 road, because it would be so convenient, and blah, 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 blah. This is how he fucking works the system, people. I'd like to get a straw vote. Now, he done done talked to every Alderman, and he does know who's on board and who's not on board. Trust me, I know this. I ain't fucking stupid. And you shouldn't be neither. Everybody, you think I'm on here for 15 minutes of fame, you're so full of fucking shit, because my fame's been done gone a long time ago. I'm on here to inform people of wrongs. I'm here to hold people fucking accountable, because nobody's ever held Harris Chemical accountable for a goddamn thing. And another thing, nobody's ever held this city more accountable to anything than I have. And that's a threat to them. And they know I'm digging, and I'm digging, and I'm digging in the right goddamn spots, because they're keep trying to stop me. Shady, shady, shadiness. We all know fucking city of LaSalle wouldn't have brought up no damn OSHA violations for Harris Chemical, because they don't want that to look bad in their fucking town. Well, our town looks horrible. When you guys see this fucking meeting, you're gonna be like, "This is what..." "This is what I've been telling you guys." It's bullshit. Stone walling. I ask a question about a building, about this said road, and he moves on to talk about softball and just fucking shuns me right off. You guys will see it. He does not only do this to me, he does it to anybody that questions his fucking authority. And for the people that left last night, before the shit hit the fucking fan, when the meeting was over, after he already heated a guy up over some bullshit? Some blackmail, the Peru and Merle's thing? Anybody know about that? All upset, because, you know, Peru on Merle's, Merle's, and then we're gonna blame a broken pipe on somebody else, and then we're gonna call the EPA, because we got, fuck, LaSalle's got ties with EPA. Oh, and in the newspaper article, he says, "We need to be very transparent about what's going on with this fucking thing." But we don't need to be transparent about what's going on with a fucking fire that blew up in your town, and you trying to lie and say the shit didn't go past fucking 80, when I got no sense as it does. That's right. I got FOIA's. I keep saying I got FOIA's. City of LaSalle. I'm, you're not the only motherfuckers on FOIA. Trust me. Trust me. And if you don't think I can't read through 300 fucking pages in one night, you're fucking wrong. So drown me with what you got, and I'll show you how much I'll fucking figure out. Because I found out a lot of things going on around here. Yep. Permits. We're gonna find them shady deals. There's a reason why they ain't getting fucking in trouble for anything. Anyway, Baccador, he's gotta go, people. He's a fucking tainted apple. He's gotta go. Um, Mayor Grove, you already know what I think of you, you gotta go. Um, you're so fucking, you got so much hatred for me, man, it fucking just bleeds out of your skin. It bleeds. You hate me more than I dislike you. And the only reason why I dislike you is because I know your shady fucking practices. I know what's been going on in this town since you fucking turned in the mayor. I know why our economic developers fucking leave and quit, and whatever. I know about a lot of stuff, people. But, you know, they gave a lot out in the beginning, and see, Baccador wants me to just throw it on out there and get it over with, because he's tired of fucking having an ulcer, and I'm sure the mayor is too, of what I'm gonna fucking dig up next. I mean, they had to go so far as to take my fucking phone and have no right to fucking take it. Yet to get it back. Even brought that up in the meeting. And people know what the newspaper don't wanna write about, no. Is that not news? That not news? That's like fucking front page to me. But, you know, we get drowned it out. When the mayor wants front page, bet your ass he can make a call and make it happen, because we seen it happen yesterday. Shameful. Yeah, it would have been, I heard you say that, and I liked that you did say that. Because that man right there, according to Mark Schneider, he was gonna get ahold of his Harris buddies and find out. And you know who his Harris buddy would be, right? Inga's husband. Money talks, man, money talks, it's politics. Um, I commend him for not fucking retiring. I wouldn't retire because Mayor Grove fucking suggested it to me. I mean, Mayor, I don't know, man. We got so many other things we need to worry about, half the shit we talk about in these meetings is just mumble jumble bullshit. And they drag them out. Drag it out. It's like, it's so easy. Wrong people in office, people. So, throughout the day, I will be making and creating clips of fucking videos. And you will see live, and in living color, the truth behind some fucking people up in that fucking city. It's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed, people. And that's not a fucking joke at all. Um... I thought it'd get better. And for Mr. Baccador to tell me that all I have to do is come down now, down to the office and hang out and ask for these paperwork's? Not once has anybody ever told me to come down and just ask for it. If it was that easy, don't you think I'd have fucking done it? Um, I don't know. I was offered though, by Brent Bader and Duncan, John Duncan. And I give him props. I give him props. They said, "We're, we're gonna get the communication down. That's what we're gonna do." And I'm not trying to drown the city out, I'm not trying to take a man away from his job, that's not my intentions at all. I have intentions. And I'm investigating my intentions. And when it comes time, Mr. Baccador, to let my little kiddies out of the fucking bag? You'll know it. You'll fucking know it. And you'll remember. You'll remember the day you fucking crossed my path, sir. You'll remember that. The ignorance you've told me throughout this whole six, seven months, people? Between my kids living across the street and down the block from me, that I'm a bad man, because I let them move into, you know, a mile away from a chemical plant? Well, little did we know that you weren't doing your part, city of LaSalle, on keeping us fucking safe. Disappointing, all the way around. There's good people in that office, there's good people up in there, there's good fucking hearts up in that chambers, but there's fucking bad apples. And when somebody like Grove's been around for a little too long? Who thinks he's got all the control and can call all the shots, like sliding in a straw vote on a goddamn $60,000 project, just because you see pavings right there, and it would be so convenient? Convenient for who? We begged for our street to get fixed. 20 years I lived here without a fucking storm drain, people. And this man can come to a meeting and say he wants a straw vote on spending $60,000 on a goddamn road? Just because of convenience? It wasn't, they couldn't even give me a barricade. Got emails on that. Can't afford them. Can't afford to give you a barricade to keep people from driving in my fucking yard? And running over the drain, because the drain didn't drain? So many things in this town, $60,000 go a long way somewhere else, but if it's for a business, you bet your ass it's gonna help. He's gonna get her to go through. Our straw vote disappeared, by the way. Just fucking vanished. So I don't understand what a straw vote is, when nothing ever happens. I'm gonna let you go. I'm dealing with some things today. Um... Kinda lost a friend, didn't lose a friend. It, it, it's complicated, but somebody's... Won't be there no more for me. And that's just something I gotta deal with. And I'll get through that. That's, it is what it is. Um... I have a support system, people. And just a piece of that support fucking chipped away, so... What do you do? Anyway, don't let this shit ruin your day. It's gonna be a nice one out today. Gonna take my dogs for a walk. I'm gonna turn some. Hey. I did make a little something yesterday, people. I decided to do something a little bit different. Because I've never seen anybody turn a bowl. With the bark on the bottom like that. So, I went ahead and I busted out a little. It's gotta dry yet, and I still gotta turn it again, um, once it's done drying, but... And clean it up. And it does sit flat. So, I'm getting back into what I'm doing. I'm getting back into being me. I'm getting back into my creativity, but I'm not giving up on no fight. I'm here for a reason, people. And if they think it's for my 15 minutes of fame, I don't know what to tell you, but sometimes you gotta thank God put you in a, on a path. And this just might be my fucking path. If I wanted my 15 minutes of fame too, just like to say, I should be making money off of it, because I am a pretty funny motherfucker. I'll make you laugh, I'll keep you up to date. Peace out, people. Every one of you guys, appreciate all the support. Keep watching the videos and keep, I'll keep posting the videos, people. Uh, the YouTube stuff, I'm gonna still do, the descriptions might not be as good as what they used to be, but don't worry, I'm still gonna blast that shit. Because the world needs to know what's going on in the little town of LaSalle. Because the world needs to know what's going on in the little town of LaSalle with the big time corruption of Charis Chemical. Peace.